Yeah.
Mr. Giorgiani.
Here.
Mr. Donglap.
Here.
Commissioner Medina Hernandez.
Here.
And the Chair.
Here.
All right, this special meeting of the Board of Commissioners will take place electronically in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of the meeting was filed and advertised with sufficient time here into the home news and Tribune. Said notice of the meeting was also filed in advance for the meeting, I'm sorry, in the Office of City Clerk's office at least forty-eight hours prior to the convening of this meeting. And was also posted on the Housing Authority website. During the meeting, participants, including members of the public, may be muted by the host. However, there will be an opportunity for them to participate and speak during the public comment period. Uh. Chair, we're going to go right into our annual meeting. Uh, I don't see, is Alberto on? Alberto was not on the chair, so if you'd like, I can take us through the annual meeting.
Let's take.
I see Joe Manfredi coming in, hold on. Hey, Joe. Oh, hello, Alberto, acting as Joe Manfredi today.
There you go.
You're muted, Alberto.
Oh, sorry, everyone, how are you?
That's all right, Alberto, we were just gonna hand off to you for the, um, annual election.
Yes.
It will be for Chair, Vice Chair, and Second Vice Chair.
Yeah, so hi, everyone, um, as you know, this is the annual meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So the first thing we'd like to do is open the nominations for the position of Chairperson.
Okay. I will. Let's see anybody, I'll nominate myself, can I nominate myself?
You, you can nominate yourself, that, that, there's nothing against that. Uh, do we have a nominee for the, for the current Chair, Commissioner Wright? Do we have any other nominees for the position of President, or Chairperson, I should say? Okay, hearing none, then I close the nominations for the position of Chairperson. And if we could have a roll call, John, on that.
Sure, this is for Chair. Commissioner, Commissioner Walde.
For the Chair. Muted. Here you go.
You're muted.
Yes, that was a yes, Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Donglap?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And congratulations, Chair.
Thank you very much, thank you guys, vote of confidence.
Right, so second, I will open the nominations then for the position of Vice Chair.
I nominate Commissioner Wallace.
So we have a nomination from Commissioner Hernandez for Commissioner Wallace? Do we have any other nominations for the position of Vice Chairperson? Hearing none, the nominations are closed, so if we could have a vote then for Commissioner Wallace for the position of Vice Chairperson.
Sure, Mr. Walde?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani?
Yes.
Mr. Donglap?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
And Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
And finally, I'll open the nominations for Second Vice Chairperson.
Giorgiani.
So Commissioner Walde, we have a nomination for Commissioner Giorgiani. Um, uh, any other nominations for the position of Second Vice Chair? Hearing none, I close the nominations, and if we could have a roll call then?
Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Giorgiani?
Yes.
Mr. Donglap?
Yes.
Mr. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
And Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations, everybody. Chair, would you like to go right into the agenda items?
Let's go right into it.
Okay, uh, consideration for the May minutes? We need a motion and second for the minutes of May?
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
Seconded by Dale, okay? Ready for the vote, Chair?
Right.
This is on the May, uh, minutes. Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Giorgiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Donglap?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Okay, my report will stand. Chair, we do have a, um, redevelopment resolution, or are you doing comment? What do you, what do you, what would you prefer?
A comment at the top of it.
So public comment now, Chair?
Public comment now.
Okay. Members of the public, if you could just raise your hand to be recognized? Any members of the public? Oh. Nine, six, nine, seven, go ahead. Nine, six, nine, seven?
I don't hear anything.
Yeah. Charlie Cradaville, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, the editor of New Brunswick Today, of course, here to ask some questions about your agenda items. But first, since I, I, I'm not clear on, uh, is this the public con, the only public comment for the day? Or will we get a chance to speak after we hear the presentation on the redevelopment?
All right, we're putting public comment at the front, uh, today, so all comments regarding agenda items are now gonna be at the front of the meeting.
Okay, so I'll start, I, I have a general question. Uh, is it true that Mr. Clark has given notice of his resignation to the authority?
We're not discussing personnel matters during this meeting. It's not part of the agenda. Let's keep it based upon what's on the agenda to be dealt with this meeting.
Well, with all due respect, sir, you know that the Board allows comments of a general nature about the authority's business. And I couldn't think of anything more important than the top person at the agency for twenty years. Uh, you know, saying he's gonna leave, is that true? Is it true he is resigning? When is, when is he leaving? What's the plan to replace him?
As of right, as of right now, that particular personnel matter is not important to this meeting. And there are no details to share with the public. At the point in time when there are details to share with the public, we will.
So, are you refusing to say if Mr. Clark has submitted his resignation?
I'm saying that that's not for this meeting, Charlie, and that's information that you could just ask, you can come to the Department, you can, when we make a personnel decision, it'll be part of the Board meeting. On that personnel decision, it'll be public to everybody, and at this point in time, it's not relevant.
Well, I mean, I think if there's gonna be an opening for the top position, that would be relevant for the public and the Board to discuss. And, um, I just, I just wanna, you know, let you know that I've tried to come to the authority a number of times, and the doors are still locked. This, the agency is closed for COVID, and, um, you know, I haven't been able to get ahold of Mr. Clark. I've left him a voicemail. Um, you know, I've, I've submitted many requests which have gone, uh, mostly unresponded to. So how is somebody who wants to know if Mr. Clark's resigning supposed to find that out?
Well, it sounds to me as though that information hasn't been made public because a decision hasn't been made, Charlie.
Okay, well, it's my understanding he has to provide notice if he's going to leave, right?
And I'm certain, once that's the case, it'll be notified. But as of right now, it's just, it's not information that's relevant to what we're doing today. Did you wanna speak about any agenda items that we have coming up?
I do, of course, but I just wanted to get a straight answer, cuz I still haven't got it yet. Has he provided notice of resignation?
We have no information provided with the public, Charlie.
So, so you know whether it's a yes or a no, but you won't tell the public?
No, what I'm, is we have no information provided for the public because there are channels with which this goes through. Um, I can make his own decisions about his career, and then once he does, and it relates to what we're doing here with the Board, we'll make notice of it to the public with the information they need to have. That's right, it's my, we don't have it for the public, not public information.
Okay, and, and how we, how will you share it with the public? How, how can I, you know, follow through to get that information?
Are you pressing me for an answer when there is none, Charlie?
I, I'm asking how I should follow up, cuz you're saying, don't worry, we'll tell you when it, when we have, when we have the information. How are you gonna tell me? You're gonna call me, you're gonna email me, is it gonna be on the website? Do I have to come to another meeting? Is he gonna be here at the next meeting?
It will be part of the Board meeting addressing personnel. But as of right now, it's just not an agenda item, there's no information, there's nothing to go off of, there's no notice to be had. Um, so you can call the authority, you can speak with Joe, there's many different ways. I'm surprised that you haven't been able to gain contact with somebody.
Chair, you're coming up on your time limit, Chair, just so you know?
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Clark. I, I hope this isn't the last time we see each other. I do wanna just say, uh, I'm very concerned about the dysfunctional nature of this Board. There've been seven meetings scheduled this year, uh, majority were canceled, and that's why we had to have a special meeting today. I'm very concerned that the Board hasn't been getting together frequently enough, and no explanation has been given for why. I also wanted to ask about the redevelopment project on your agenda. Can you tell me, are there any affordable housing units slated to be in that project? Or, or any kind of contribution to support affordable housing like we saw from the Russo project? Or is this a unaffordable project being promoted?
Mr. Chairman, uh, to John Hoffman, I can answer that. Twenty percent of the units are to be allocated for low and moderate income housing.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, and I, I would appreciate it if you do open it up after the presentation, cuz I'm sure many of us will have questions after we see it. But, uh, I, that, that's all for me now, I'm gonna follow up with you, Chairman, cuz I think you may not understand the full, uh, breadth of the problem here. So I'll follow up with you via email and phone, and I hope that you'll hear me out, thank you.
Any other members of the public? Okay, Chair, ready for the agenda items?
Absolutely.
All right. Resolution number twenty-one is a redevelop, acting as redevelopment authorities, a resolution approving eleven Spring Street Urban Renewal LLC as redeveloper for property known as Block sixteen, Lot four point zero one, eleven Spring Street on the New Brunswick tax map for the construction of a residential commercial project located in the NB Downtown Redevelopment Plan area. Need a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Okay, and we have Special Counsel John Hoffman here.
Good evening, everybody, uh, the applicant is eleven Spring Street Urban Renewal LLC. It's affiliate, the BORI organization, which owns the site. The property is in the downtown redevelopment plan area, which permits high-rise, mid-rise buildings, and it conforms with all the requirements of the redevelopment plan. The project, as I think will be described later by the architect, is a thirty-story mixed-use development with three hundred and forty-two residential apartments, studio, one, one and two bedrooms, as of, as of this time, on floors five to thirty, a ground floor commercial area, lobby and amenities, and parkings on the ground floor and floors, floors two to four. Twenty percent of the units are designated to be for low and moderate income individuals. Parking will also be provided at one Spring Street, and there's a traffic study which indicates that between the parking at eleven Spring Street and one Spring Street, there will be approximately five hundred spaces, and the maximum demand is four hundred and twenty. It also complies with the parking requirements in the redevelopment plan, which has offsets if you're close to a train station and have low and moderate income housing and have electrical, electric car vehicles. The cost of the construction is estimated to be one hundred and twenty million dollars. It will be supplied, the, uh, both with debt and equity. A detailed financing plan will be supplied within six months after the date of the redevelopment agreement. And it is anticipated that construction will begin with eighteen months of the agreement and be completed within twenty-four months thereafter. I think you're all familiar with the BORI organization, they have built Aspire in one Spring Street in New Brunswick and major residential high-rise construction in Newark and Atlantic City. The concept plan, which will be described by the architect, was prepared by MHS Architects and designers. We're also approving the redevelopment agreement because we had time to both have the redeveloper approve in the agreement, it's the typical agreement, I'm not gonna go through all the clauses, just point out that the redeveloper represents, he owns the site. In fact, I think there's a parking, a, a parking deck on the site. They will agree to reimburse the agency for all their costs and also provide for an escrow and pay the agency fee. It describes the project and also the fact there will be a binding agreement, which will require the developer to always allow the people at eleven Spring Street to use one Spring Street. They, we have in the usual, there'll be attempt to hire residents who reside in New Brunswick and are public housing. As I said, construction will begin within eighteen months and be done within twenty-four months after construction is begun. There's a typical insurance and indemnity clause, there's a guarantee by the BORI organization of the, uh, the payment of all the costs and, and the identification clause. The, uh, there is the usual covenants against discrimination and requiring a project to be used in accordance with the plan for at least thirty years. There cannot be any transfer without the consent of the authority, except for if, except for minor transfers like leases to residences or, or easements. There's a clause permitting a mortgage and a mortgagees rights. There are default clauses and remedies and representations that the developer has no prohibition against disconstruction in any way by any litigation, and also there's the ability to construct. There's also a force majeure clause. Mr. Tom Kelso, the attorney for, for the, for the developer is here, and he will describe the presentation, and his, his clients are also with him. And if, if you have any questions, I will, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Miss Kelso? Oh, here you go.
Yeah, uh, okay, uh, it says two, 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 uh, it says from the second to the fourth floor, additional amenities, what, what is that?
Well, parking from the second to the fourth floor.
Oh, oh.
A small commercial area, there'll, there'll be a lobby on the first floor, and, uh, the, uh, some of the amenities, which the, the architect can describe.
Oh, so second to the fourth floor is parking?
Yes, and then all the other, they're gonna use the parking at the, uh, at one Spring Street also.
Okay.
And we will have the requirement that they have a binding agreement that they, they have to, as long as eleven Spring Street is, is in use for residential, they'll have to, they'll have to let them use one Spring Street.
Okay, uh, the total cost is about one twenty?
That's right.
Yeah. Who are the financiers? I mean, what, what's the source of financing?
Well, it's gonna be debt and, well, I think the developer can describe it, as of now, I think it's just tentative. But they have to come up with a detailed financing plan to present to the authority within six months of this agreement.
Okay, since you have twenty percent set aside?
Yes.
Is there any state funding in there? Or who required that twenty?
You should ask that of the, of the developer, I'm not sure.
All right, okay, thank you.
Can the developer answer that question? Um, Yogi, can you, um, ask that question again, please?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelso?
Yes, uh, thank you, I, I, um, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you on behalf of the, the redevelopment entity, which is eleven Spring Street Urban Renewal LLC. I know that Board members are very familiar with the BORI Development Corporation that's had a, a long history in the city of New Brunswick, and as Mr. Hoffman has indicated, uh, successfully developed, uh, multiple residential projects, including projects here in the city of New Brunswick. Uh, I won't reiterate the things that John talked about. He, he went through some detail with regard to, to the overall plan of what, what the vision is for the project. And he also identified the various components of the redevelopment agreement uh, that we have negotiated, uh, along the lines of the typical agreement that I think your Board members are familiar with. Uh, and I would just state for the record that the representations that have been made by Mr. Hoffman with regard to the various detail uh, are consistent with, uh, our plan, and there wasn't anything that he stated that was not accurate. So I would just reinforce that, uh, concept so that I don't have to basically repeat it. Um, I do have, uh, with us this evening, uh, Mr. Sam Bori, who is the representative of the developer, uh, Mr. Omar Mansour, who's the project development director on behalf of BORI Development, uh, Mr. Dan Doherty, uh, from Dynamic Engineering, who does the civil engineering for the project, Mr. Matt Sekler from Stonefield Engineering, uh, to answer any questions with respect to, uh, the traffic study that was provided, uh, uh, on, uh, behalf of the developer, and Mr. Michael Higgins from MHS Architecture, uh, that, um, is here to, to go through an overview of the project. And not to scare anybody, um, and looking at their watches, I don't intend to call anyone to testify other than Mr. Higgins. Uh, the others are clearly here available to answer questions for you that you may have. Took a year ago, you, you have a couple of questions already we're familiar with. So, um, I would wanna reinforce something that Mr. Hoffman stated, and that is this plan, which has been, uh, in development and concept for, for several years, uh, you know, is fully compliant with the downtown, the NB Downtown Redevelopment Plan. Uh, we spent a lot of time making certain that we were in full compliance with the plan. Uh, and I would indicate, just to answer a specific question, Yogi, you indicated, uh, we are, uh, it's necessary for us to provide a, uh, total financing plan within six months of the execution of the agreement. But we did provide to you in, uh, the, um, the application package, uh, and consistent with what the plan requires. You know, a history of the BORI Development Company with respect to similar projects that they have developed, not, not only here in New Brunswick, within other areas of the state of New Jersey, and also a letter from Valley National Bank, uh, indicating, uh, their interest and willingness to become a financial partner with uh, the BORI Development Company, uh, just to give an indication that of the, um, the overall strategic planning that the BORIs have done with respect to getting a hundred and twenty million dollar project financed and developed. Uh, with that, just as a background and, uh, a confirmation with what Mr. Hoffman has indicated, I would call for testimony, Mr. Michael Higgins. And I don't know, uh, your formalities, John, are you gonna swear Michael in?
No, we just do straight into the record, it's not, it's fine, he's already, cuz you have to go in front of the planning board anyway.
Yes, uh, I would ask, uh, Michael, if you could just confirm, you are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for close to thirty years. I'm a partner and owner of Marchetto Higgins Stevie, or MHS Architects, based in Hoboken, New Jersey.
Okay, uh, I know that we've prepared a, uh, exhibit for the Board's consideration that allows you to go through the components of the project, uh, and the visuals that always, I think, are helpful for Board members to be able to see. I'm assuming that you can put that on the screen.
Yes, is it okay to share my screen?
John, we got that? The answer, I think, is yes.
I think, yeah, Michael, I just gave you, uh, I just made you the host, so make sure you make me host back when you're done.
Okay, will too. Okay, let me see here, let me know, can, can you see the screen right now?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a nine-car, uh, nine, uh, slide presentation, a brief presentation, um, that shows, uh, some of the plans.
Uh, this starts with this site location map. So if you see the red square or rectangle sort of in the middle of the screen, that's the project site. Um, Spring and Church, it's the existing parking garage that's at that site. You'll see the eight-story, um, Albany, uh, Street Plaza office buildings that the BORI offices are located in. And, uh, you'll see the New Brunswick train station. Uh, graphically, we depicted the, uh, Eastern Avenue, uh, extension, cuz it wasn't, um, completed at the time of this, the site photo. You also see some of the context of one Spring Street and some of the other buildings in the area, and also the Helix Development Site directly across from this, uh, where we're proposed building in this red rectangle. Uh, the next slide is some of the project summary statistics. Um, so we're talking about Block sixteen, Lot four point oh one. The lot area is approximately point five five acres. The proposed building height is three hundred feet and thirty stories. The number of dwelling units, three hundred and forty-two, uh, a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, seven percent studios, seventy-two percent one bedrooms, and twenty-one percent two bedrooms. Uh, there is an affordable unit, uh, twenty percent. Um, the retail square footage at the ground floor at the corner of Church and Spring is seventeen hundred and eighteen square feet of commercial space. Uh, there are a hundred and twelve parking spaces provided on-site with the remaining parking located in the adjacent, uh, Spring Street garage. Uh, there's also eighty bicycle parking spaces. What's on the screen now is the, uh, ground floor of the building. Uh, so Spring Street and Church Street along the bottom, Spring Street along the left. The existing, uh, one-twenty Albany Street or, uh, Albany Street Plaza office building is grayed out in the back. The, uh, alley that accesses the back of that building from, uh, Church Street is, is here on the right side of the page. Um, and just to walk through, uh, the project, Spring Street, the lobby entrance was located closest to the train station, and this is the lobby area here showing just a schematic concept of it that has the concierge and the normal things that are in the, uh, lobby. The retail space is on the corner of Church and Spring, again seventeen hundred and eighteen square feet. We have loading coming in for the building for deliveries, off, off-street loading off of Church Street, and the garage entrance is also off of Church Street. The, uh, second, third, and fourth floors, uh, this is a typical plan of that parking garage layout. And then we have a typical tower plan, which is, uh, the floor plate from the ninth to twenty-ninth floors, uh, that shows the configuration of the building and the different layouts. This has fourteen units per floor, and the mixture of the units is consistent with what, uh, the, the overall building statistics are. This is a view of the building, um, taken from along Albany Street, uh, the thirty-story tower. The garage portion is this lower portion, the first floor of floors. Um, the office building, the eight-story office building, Albany Street Plaza is, is to the left of the page, and then you'll see one Spring Street to the right. Um, the ground floor lobby is covered by a collinade, uh, so you, protection from the rain. Uh, the rear part of the garage has a green wall that separates the office building from the garage. And then the upper floor, second, third, and fourth floors of the parking garage has a metal screening that has a warm color similar to the, uh, Albany Street Plaza building, office building. Above there start the residential floor plates. Uh, there, this large opening of glass that the hand is circling, or two, a double floor of amenity spaces. They're each two-story spaces, and then we continued the two-story reading with metal framework that outlines the windows to break down the overall scale, uh, of the building. Uh, at the top of the building is an amenity space also, and some screened mechanical spaces that again use that similar colored metal panel that's used at the base of the building, um, to, uh, screen the rooftop mechanical equipment. I have a few other views. Uh, this view is from, uh, the street level along Spring Street. So you get a sense of the arcade, the entrance area where the lobby is, and what the retail space would look like. We use some angled geometry and these frames to create some architectural interest throughout the building. Uh, this is the view from George Street, um, which will show the, uh, Albany Street Plaza in the foreground, one Spring Street to the left, um, and our building with some balconies that are, uh, at the corner of the building to provide a little more play of light and shadow along the facade. Uh, and here is a view from Spring Street that shows the distance between the existing office building, that's a little grayed out here, twenty-eight feet to the tower floor plate, the green wall, uh, which is also separated from the building by a service, uh, path of four and a half feet wide. And then you can just see the screened, uh, parking garage, the ground floor lobby, and the ground floor, uh, retail space. This window or large framed area is that two stories of amenity. They're each double height, so it's really four stories of residential equivalent. And the rest of the building is that, uh, residential patterning, uh, to provide some visual interest and, uh, play of light and shadow across the facade. That's the last slide, I can go back to any of the slides, um, that the Commissioners would like to see, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mike, I might ask if, um, we can describe what the amenities, uh, would be consisting of?
Sure, so on the, uh, what's, what would be in this area, I'll just use this, uh, slide because it's a good view. Uh, they haven't been fully programmed, but typically they have to do with, uh, wellness and health, so there'll be a, uh, uh, yoga rooms, gymnasium, um, you know, the different sort of programs that have to do with health and wellness. So there'll be a, uh, uh, yoga rooms, gymnasium, um, you know, the different sort of programs that have to do with health and wellness. There'll be some sort of community room and some co-working spaces, uh, that'll probably be part of the amenity room. Sometimes there are rooms that could be rent. I think these are gonna be defined by ownership and the marketing team as they, as they develop. And then there's a, there's a room up top with an outdoor roof space at the thirtieth floor. That'll be probably some sort of clubroom, sky, sky lounge type of thing for the building's residents. That's my understanding of how, what the program, the amenities would be.
Okay. Um, and again, from your perspective as the architect, we have complied with all the requirements of the NB Downtown redevelopment plans. Uh, from your, from your perspective?
Yes, that's correct.
And you had that plan, uh, to work from, so it's not, in other words, you were, we actually had to go through the plan to make sure we complied with everything.
Yes, the design of the building was based on the, the redevelopment plans, requirements and objectives.
Okay, uh, I don't have any further questions for, uh, Michael, if the board wishes to address some of the questions you may have.
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, it's excellent that you have, uh, twenty percent set aside. Now, uh, what's the breakdown of the affordable units? Is it on, uh, is it in one location? I mean, on each floor or is it located on one floor?
It'll be spread throughout the building.
Right, oh, okay. What type of units? One or two bedrooms or?
Studios, ones and twos.
Ones and, oh, okay. I don't wanna ask the rent at this point, but.
The rent is dictated for those affordable units.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Here.
What's the, what's the maximum rooms available in this building? Three, four bedrooms or what is it, the max?
It's a two bedrooms, yeah.
Pardon me?
Correct, two bedrooms are the largest, uh, units.
Thank you.
These, those, the windows on the, uh, residences, are those funk, those are functional? Or is that just, uh, as you're saying, the shadow and light play, that aesthetic that looks like they might be double hung?
No, they, they operate, they're not double hung windows, probably there'll be a projection window and they're limited on how far they can open. Yeah.
Language to describe it, but, yeah, but they're oper- functional, those that open.
Yes.
Okay.
So you're looking at a total of about, you said twenty percent is the three hundred and forty two units, that's correct? So looking at a total of about sixty eight units. Um, and then you said it'll be for affordable, a mixture, not just only studio, but a mixture of either the studio, one or two bedroom apartment. Depending on who is, um, applying and looking for the affordable unit, correct?
That's correct.
It'll actually be the same percentage of the breakdown of the unit. So for seven percent studios, um, the same percentage breakdown of the affordables.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, could you just go back to that, um, slide real quick, please? Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
There, you ready to move?
I'm ready.
Uh, call the vote?
Yeah.
Oh.
Do we have other questions?
I thought, yeah, I think Commissioner Medina Hernandez has a question.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving to vote, are we going to, um, have, um, people ask any other questions? Or we're gonna move to vote for just the commissioners?
Do we have any questions from the commissioners?
What I was saying from the public, were there any questions or did you wanna move just to the commissioners chair? Sorry.
Do we have questions back to this project from the public?
Uh, Chair again, yep, Charlie.
For this project specifically, uh, let's listen to it, go on Charlie.
Good.
Hi, Charlie Cradaville, thanks for opening up the questions. I wanted to ask if there's a timeline for the project, uh, when construction would start and when it would open, my apologies if I missed that.
Yes, it's, uh. Uh, constructions to commence within eighteen months of, uh, the execution of the redevelopment agreement. And to be completed within twenty four months after that.
And to be clear, the item on today's agenda is approving the agreement and the designation, or is the agreement not finalized yet?
No, it's both. It's finalized, yes.
Okay, and, um, may I ask what the redevelopment fee was for this and if it's been paid?
All the fees are based upon the, this, the city's ordinance. I don't recall the exact amounts, but the fees are paid in accordance with that, there's no difference than, uh, any other redevelopment project. By ordinance.
Okay, good to know, uh, I guess I was just curious if it's a, you know, I see a hundred twenty million dollar cost for the project. Um, I was curious, you know, what kind of?
Well, there, there are several different forms of fees, Charlie, there's, uh, fees to the redevelopment authority for their costs. And a redevelopment fee to them, but the city also, as you know, has enacted a redevelopment fee ordinance. Uh, and I believe, uh, that the fit, that fee is one hundred thousand dollars. That's the maximum fee to the ordinance.
Max, okay, and do you think they are paying the max or not sure?
Yes, I'm, I'm sure they are, yes.
Okay, about it, and I wanted to ask if there's been any coordination or collaboration with the folks doing the project across the street, right? There's the, uh, the big hole in the ground, um, supposedly gonna be home to, uh, as many as three buildings. The Devco is planning, how does this structure fit in with that? And does it actually, um, you know, has there been coordination?
It, it, it's not related to the, to the, um, hub project at all. Uh, I suspect that the developers have probably spoken to each other, but they're not related to each other and they're not dependent on each other. Uh, this, this project is geared to strictly residential development with affordable units. It's located in close proximity to the train station. And so the expectation is there's a market there, probably from some, uh, people that may end up ultimately working in the hub. Uh, but that's, that's, it's not, they're not tied together at all. And certainly there'll be an interest from commuters, uh, because of the proximity of the train station. Uh, I'm sure that there'll be further coordination with the developers for construction purposes. Because in order to be able to construct these projects in close proximity to each other. There'll need to be coordination with respect to construction activities.
Got it, thank you for the thorough answer. I did just wanna address the other two pieces of the project, so that's the residential. But there's also a small retail chunk and I wanted to ask you what types of businesses you might expect there and also how the parking will work. Is that, um, only for residents?
Um, Sam, I don't know if you wanna speak to the retail?
Sure, hey Charlie, yeah, so it's going to be, it's really, you know, when we build retail. We don't really try to target it, it's just, it's a good corner retail location. I imagine, uh, you know, restaurant uses may be interested in and hopefully some other uses as well. It'll really feed off of whatever is going across the street. Um, and, you know, of course, they're gonna have retail, so I think they just complement each other. We felt it was important, um, to incorporate retail somewhere along that street line and that corner is just a perfect spot for it. And as far as coordination, uh, with Devco, of course, like Tom said, you know, uh, coordinating construction and just, uh. Going over all that kind of, all the logistics, um, that'll absolutely be something that we'll have to, uh, work together on. What was your last question, Charlie?
Uh, the parking, is it open to, uh, non-residents or it's only residents?
Right now, it's just going to be resident parking.
Understood, well, thank you for answering my questions, I really do appreciate opening the floor. I, I hope you appreciated some of the information that, that came out of it.
Fantastic, do we have any other questions that are on the floor?
Yes, I do have a, uh, question, Chair. So, um, I see that you have other, uh, residential units and, uh, other urban areas in Newark. So those other units that you have, that they also offer, they've also offered affordable housing. I see that you have in Newark.
Yes, yes, so.
And Atlantic City, okay.
Yeah, not in every building, but, uh, the most recent building we opened in Newark, uh, does have twenty percent affordable. Uh, and the building that you mentioned in Atlantic City, that's also twenty percent affordable, along with the, the Aspire. Uh, right up the street is twenty percent affordable as well.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions? You go.
No.
Alright, let's move forward, John, call the vote.
Call the vote.
Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell. Commissioner Caldwell, did we lose Commissioner Caldwell?
If we lost Commissioner Caldwell, I don't think we can move forward with this, cause we do not have quorum.
Uh, well, we have to vote through, Commissioner, we have to vote through, so, uh, Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Mr. Dunglap.
Yes.
Commissioner Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes, and in this instance, what are we gonna do for, uh, uh?
You have, uh, you have, uh, you have four affirm, you have four affirmative, so you do have a quorum chair.
That's perfect.
Thank you all, uh, Chair, shall I continue?
Absolutely, let's continue forward.
Alright, resolution number twenty two is a resolution ratifying, authorizing and approving the payment of bills for the months of May, June and July, twenty twenty three.
I just wanna say thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Tom and everyone, thank you everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you.
Nah.
Uh, there's a resolution on the table, that's for the payment of bills, is there a move in a second?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Not a one.
Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell. Oh, he's gone, I'm sorry, I keep calling him, Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunglap.
Yes.
Mr. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
Alright, resolution number twenty three is a resolution adopting the state budget for FY six thirty twenty four. For all programs and operations of the New Brunswick Housing Authority.
Move.
Make a motion to, I'll second.
I'm sorry, who moved?
Me.
Mr. Walde?
Yeah.
Giorgian seconded, uh, Gi- just a point of order, Chair. Uh, as you know, the state, or as you may not know, the state has actually converted over to all electronic submissions. We had a little bit of a hiccup with our twenty three, twenty four has gone a lot more smoothly, if that's even a word. And, um, so we have now received back in writing confirmation that we can move forward with the adoption for this evening. So that's why I sent you that note earlier.
Can you go over it again, please, on the budget?
Sure, the budget is basically the framework budget, given that we are still in our, um. Resolution with the, the federal government through September, we do not have a new budget for, uh, the federal fiscal year. So our budgets are estimated between eighty to ninety percent of the total budget component. Um, we use a two percent, um, increase pretty much for programs and operations and try to keep it in that framework. And we project out a ninety percent leasing rate, so our budgets are relatively conservative, um, given the, the, um. I guess tense and tenuous situation with the federal government side. We try to make sure that regardless of what happens, barring, you know, sequestration or something crazy like that. That we're able to operate and present a budget that will be, um, functional and usable, uh, for our fiscal year. Uh, because we are a, a July one start year, um, it's very, very difficult to try to operate a program. That the majority of funding comes from a October one, uh, funding source. And it's even harder to do that when the, uh, federal government's budgets are more continuing resolutions than they are actual real budgets.
Chair, I have additional question? Chair.
Yep.
Oh, okay, uh, did we have any increase or we have the same budget as last year?
There's a two percent increase a- across the board for most program operations. HUD has not announced their funding levels, so we're not, we're, we're not projecting, uh, you know, a windfall. But we're basically holding our numbers at a two percent increase.
Because we believe that that's what HUD's gonna come back with?
We, we believe that they'll, they'll be a budget with that percentage, um, but again, we, we're very conservative with our rent. With our rent revenue as well, we don't, you know, we don't just, uh, do the same number we did last year. We project rent at a ninety percent collection rate, so our budgets are usually well, um, within the framework of operations and quite conservative.
What was our, what was our collection rate for last year?
Uh, on the next resolution, uh, we're doing a cleanup write-off of, uh, seventy seven thousand, one hundred and sixty five dollars. That's on a collection total of about one point two million in rent. Um, that is a rollover for COVID, just so you know, and these are tenants who have either expired or been evicted. So these are not, we're not writing off any active tenants, so we have a, we have a very high collection rate, we're in the ninety three to ninety five percent. Um, if, if not more, most years.
Okay, that's, it's not rolled over, okay, cool.
No, no, we write off every year.
Perfect.
Ready for the vote?
Ready for the vote?
Okay, Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm not gonna say, the whole, Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Mr. Dunglap.
Yes.
Mr. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
Alright, uh, resolution twenty four is a resolution ratifying, authorizing and approving the write-offs of certain rent in the total amount of seventy seven, seventy seven thousand, one hundred and sixty five dollars and thirty six cents. Deemed to be uncollectible by staff and personnel of the Housing Authorities in the City of New Brunswick.
Move.
Second.
Pretty straightforward, these are tenants who have expired and or have been evicted and are no longer in our properties. Ready for the vote? Oh, go ahead.
John, uh, I remember, uh, there was an agency in Philadelphia which was doing the collection, is that?
There's all different agencies that do collections, yeah, we, we, in addition to the agencies collecting, we actually, uh, for tenants who have not expired. We actually know, um, in our, in our HUD system, there's a, uh, area, um, that we go after monies for debts owed. Which pretty much listed on all federal programs, so if a tenant skips out, is evicted or what have you and owes us money. We enter it into the what's called the HUD's HUD debts owed system. And, um, that basically locks it in so that they can't receive any future assistance without paying us first.
What's our collection, uh, rate?
It's not great. No, I, I wouldn't even venture to guess, but it is quite low. A- again, this, uh, you know, a good amount of that seventy seven thousand are people who have passed away, so we're not gonna, you know.
Okay.
Alright, okay.
Ready for the vote, Chair?
Ready for the vote?
Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunglap.
Yes.
Mr. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty five is a resolution authorizing an improvement in contract with Manfredi and Pellecchio for general legal services for the New Brunswick Housing Authority. In an amount not to exceed fifty five thousand dollars.
Motion?
Second.
Uh, as you know, we go out every year for our annual legal services, uh, our legal contracts, uh, are typically done toward the end of the year. However, um, as you'll see with the last resolution on here, we have had a lot more activity in the last twelve months. So we were necessarily, it was necessary to go out and do a public solicitation, which we did. And, um, Manfredi and Pellecchio was, uh, the highest scoring, uh, respondent. Ready for the vote, Chair?
Ready.
Commiss- uh, Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunglap.
Yes.
Mr. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty six is a resolution authorizing and approving an inter-agency agreement between the New Brunswick Housing Authority and the Housing Authority of the City of Trenton.
Move.
I'll second.
Uh, Chair, as you know, uh, we have had numerous inter-agency agreements with numerous housing authorities. This inter-local agreement covers the Violence Against Women Act or VAWA. It allows us to, uh, utilize our units and systems, uh, jointly to help, um, you know, protect people who are. Um, in those types of situations, um, and, um, it's been very successful, it's used all around the state. And I'm very appreciative to, um, the, uh, Trenton Housing Authority for offering. And, uh, and I hope the board will consider that, uh, they utilize this tool, uh, this seems to be happening more and more. And, um, you know, it's a great resource to have, should we need it or should they need it?
That's fantastic, absolutely.
There's a question, Chair.
Hi, uh, John, you know, I've been, uh, can you go over the training that you're providing? You know, this is the first time I heard about. You know, this is the first time I heard about this.
So, the Violence Against Women Act, well, there's not, this, this inter-local actually envisions a public housing to public housing exchange. So if we had a tenant year ago that was experiencing a VAWA issue at our public, of our public housing property in New Brunswick, we would be able to transfer them to a public housing unit in Trenton, thereby taking them out of the violent threats and situation that they're in here, and they would move them into a public housing unit in Trenton with the assistance and, and under the auspices of privacy with both, uh, the state and the, and the, uh, police components. Um, it is not a, it is not a tenant, um, training program, we utilize it for the, the one-time emergency relocation of people who are in imminent danger.
But I have a question, oh, go ahead, Walden, sorry, Commissioner.
How do we protect them, though, if somebody knows that, if somebody knew that they?
We're not announcing where we're sending them.
Yeah, I know that.
And other housing authorities have other inter-locals. So we're, our protection basically is relocating them out of this city, s- similarly the, the other way.
Okay.
Yeah, and they can jointly have other inter-locals so that they may move to Trenton, they may move to Burlington, they may move to Bayonne, they may move to whoever.
Oh, okay.
It's almost like an open exchange component where we can move them to Trenton, they can move from Trenton somewhere else. So we're protecting them by moving them out of New Brunswick where the violence is, uh, to, to another location.
You answered my question, yeah.
Is there a component to this program, uh, social work or otherwise that? So what I'm envisioning is we emergency relocate somebody, but then we're in turn inviting, uh, uh, some of that danger upon our residences, is there something that monitors, uh, communication? Just makes it so that the intention of it being kind of like, um,
Yeah, we work with both the state police and the local authorities on any of these types of transfers, um, to other components. Uh, this, the sad news is there is no, uh, prohibition of restriction from the site. Uh, we can bar and ban, um, uh, violators from our property, so in a se- in essence, if, if Mr. Smith had to be relocated to another site, and Mrs. Smith was the violator, this is not just, it's named, you know, VAWA, but it actually is g- not gender specific, so, um, but if, if that person had to be moved to another site, we can, in fact, the bar, the assailant from our property. And if that person comes on our property for any reason whatsoever, they are a, it's a, it's a trespassing uh, component, and they're arrested for, for defiant trespassing. So we have systems that we can put into place, similarly where they're being, uh, transferred to, that they would be put into place. But, um, again, it's, it's, it's definitely a coordination effort, it's not just sending somebody down there and having them go into those components.
I have one other question. I have one other question, so, um, my other question is, is that, um, you indicated, uh, this is between New Brunswick and Trenton. So if they're in either locations for, if we do not have any spots available, then what happens with that in, with that? The family, the individual, what happens, are we working then at other, um, locations, um, housing?
Yeah, Trent, Trenton actually had, does not have a voucher program, so they can't issue tenants a voucher, we can. So, so if it was a transfer to our authority and we were able to then transfer that component, we would be able to do that. Um, Trenton has other inter-local agreements with other authorities, so if they, if we don't have a two-bedroom unit here, and they need a two-bedroom unit, we would then transfer, you know what I mean, they would go to that other component.
Thank you.
So, yeah, it's a shuffling of the cards, essentially, we're trying to keep those people out of harm's way.
Hey, John, just for the record, have anyone ever had to go through this as, as of yet?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Good success?
Uh, to six, yes, to success, um, a- and, and in some cases, um, you know, the, the, uh, individual gets back in contact with the assailant, so, it, it, uh, it feeds some of those purposes, so that happens as well. So it's not always a success, but we have seen some very, uh, good successes.
Good.
And that is, would be my concern, is that individual gets back in contact with the assailant and then invites, you know, that particular danger into the residences, uh, with our existing residents. Um, what we can do in this instance is what our options are.
Yeah, and that goes with the co- coordination with the case manager, with the state, and with, with our police department, we have a great police department, they work very well uh, with our, with our staff and our, our, uh, components, so it is, it's gonna be an ongoing process and coordination of that. Alright, you ready for the vote?
Yeah.
Alright, Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Mister Donglap.
Yes.
Mister Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
A resolution number twenty-seven is a resolution authorizing and approving project-based housing choice vouchers for Sterling Side Residence, fifty Nielsen Street, and coming home of Middlesex County, Inc., forty-five Remsen Ave from the New Brunswick Housing Authority.
Motion.
Move.
Walde, you seconding it?
Okay.
Okay, uh, as you know, uh, Chair, we have gone out and solicited, uh, public, uh, requests for proposals for project-based vouchers, um, these two entities did respond to the public solicitation. They are wishing to project base eight and ten, or up, up to eight and up to ten, uh, project-based vouchers in these developments that they are, um, gonna be building. Um, the developments would then, uh, have the affordability, um, locked into those units in those developments. So this would, in essence, create additional access for affordable housing, as well as stabilize, um, you know, the resource that's, resources that we have, um, embedded into those buildings. So these would project base the assistance in those buildings, tenants would have to qualify to meet those certain specific qualifications. And then if the tenant did move out, the voucher would stay and the assistance would stay in that building.
Okay. And you said that was forty-five Remsen, and what was the other one?
Forty-five Remsen Ave and fifty Nielsen, these are new, these are new developments.
Yes, yeah.
Fifty Nielsen, is that, that, what spot, um, is that located again, John?
That's the vacant lot right across the street from, uh, the Old Lord Sterling School.
Okay.
Coming back towards, uh, yeah, vacant lot, it's got a stone, it's a stone lot right now.
Yes, and then the forty-five Remsen?
Forty-five Remsen is also, uh, uh, a, a development site. I don't know if it's vacant, I think it may have some older buildings on there, what have you, but if they're proposing it as a development site.
And what were, what were the number of vouchers again, respectively?
Five, five for the first project and ten for the second, it's up to, I'm sorry, uh, eight, up to eight and up to ten.
Up to eight and up to ten. Okay. Which would then lock those units in for?
So, it's a fifty, twenty-year contract.
Okay.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Mister Donglap.
Yes.
Mister Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-eight is a resolution authorizing and approving an agreement with the New Jersey Public Housing Authority Joint Insurance Fund to provide insurance to the New Brunswick Housing Authority.
Motion.
Move.
I'll second.
Zach, are you making the motion?
I'm making the motion.
Oh, okay, and then Rock a second, okay, got it.
Motion.
Yeah, okay, um, as you know, the, the joint, the New Jersey Joint Insurance Fund, the JIF, um, is a self-insured component, it provides insurance for about ninety, ninety to ninety-five percent, I would say now, of the housing authorities. Every three years, they do a renewal, um, the state actually provides a waiver for this, and it allows housing authorities to participate in the joint insurance, which is essentially a self-insured pool. And, uh, it, this is our third year, so we are coming up again, uh, for our renewal. Um, they offer, uh, excellent rates, excellent service, training for staff, training for our, um, other maintenance components as well, and, um, they do a great job, and we're hopeful that we'll continue that relationship for the next three years.
That's fantastic.
Ready for the vote?
Vote.
Okay, Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Mister Donglap.
Yes.
Mister Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-nine is a resolution ratifying and approving a change order for general legal service contract between Manfredi and Pellekio and the New Brunswick Housing Authority.
Move.
I'll second.
Uh, Chair, as you know, uh, we, uh, did not have a meeting, uh, so, we, uh, and we also have had some increased legal, um, activities, it's necessary for us to do a change order to the existing contract. Uh, the, the contract, the other contract was awarded this evening, but this change order is embedded, um, in your board package with the memo right at the end, that talks about the reasons and the amounts. Um, and it's necessary for us to continue, uh, to close out the current contract, and which will move us into the new contract.
Is this additional cost to the existing contract?
Yeah, it's a not to exceed twenty thousand year ago, to the, to the existing contract of a fifty-five thousand dollar contract.
Oh, okay, so just in case they pass the fifty-five, they have the option of using the twenty thousand.
Correct, up to, up to.
Up to.
It's not a, yeah.
Okay. What was the? How did they do last year?
Look, they've done excellent every year, um, Yeah, it's one of our publicly solicited, uh, professional service contracts, so we always work within that framework, but it's just because of this year, we had some increased activities, and also with the delay in, in the, in the amounts, we wanted to make sure that we did a change order, to cover any billings or any periods that we had.
Alright, okay.
Ready, Chair?
Ready.
Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner, oh, I almost did Caldwell, Commissioner Giorgiani.
Yes.
Mister Donglap.
Yes.
Mister Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
And that's all I had.
Alright.
Chair.
Yes.
Yes, um, I would like if we can have a closed session, um, before you, um, uh, uh, we can have a closed session, there are some, some things we'd like to discuss, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we're gonna have, uh, Alberto, could you send out a closed session, um, link?
Yes, I can, um. Give me two minutes.
I, I'm just curious, what the reason for the closed session is? Be enumerated in the resolution?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cradville, I didn't hear what you said, I didn't hear what you said.
He was asking what the purpose of the closed session is.
Oh, it's, um, some things that I need to discuss with, um, the commissioners in the closed session. So, and that, that information then probably come out, but it's some things I need to discuss, um, Mr. Cradville.
I, I understand, I just think there's a, a statute that has to be complied with, so there's, there's certain reasons that are okay to go into closed session, certain reasons that are not. So I, I think there's supposed to be a resolution, and I just wanted to understand what the resolution is going to say as to the purpose of the closed session.
Aaron, do we need to get off of this meeting and wait for the link?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sending the link out, um, as we speak, uh, John, to you, and if you wanna just forward it to everyone.
Well, we have to shut off and then go back?
Yes.
Yeah, thi- this meeting will keep open, because obviously, we, after we go into closed session, we'll have to come back into open session. And obviously, if there's any action by the board, we, we then take that in open session, so, um, I'll just ask, uh, everyone to, uh, I'll send the, I'm sending the link to John now, and then he will, he will provide that to the board. Um, and then once we're done, we'll come back to this link, um, for the open session.
Okay.
And even if the board does not take action, we'll have to go back to open session to adjourn the meeting, so.
Point of order, you have to pass a resolution to go into a closed session. Has to be a vote taken, and there has to be a reason given.
We do, we do, uh, yeah, yes, Charlie, we do, and, and in fact, that's, uh, that would be the next thing that the board will have to do, so.
We set up technically with everything.
Uh, yep, John, did you, I just sent it to you.
Alright, I'll take a look, one sec. John, or Chair?
Yes.
I'll break back, I'm just gonna go get a phone charger.
Absolutely.
With you.
I'm gonna have to do the same in a second.
Alright, Chair, I just sent it out to the five board members.
Alright, so we're gonna-
Alberto, you have that. Alberto, you wanna make a statement about closed session, uh, and then there's gotta be an action taken?
Did you email it or text me?
I, I sent it by email, I sent it by email.
Okay, I haven't gotten it yet, but let me see. I'll, yep.
So we, we need a motion to enter into closed session and, um, a, a, just a designation now. Again, there, there's certain reasons to enter into closed session, uh, personnel, uh, attorney-client privilege matters, so, um, just the designation as to the reason for the closed session, um, and that's part of the, the resolution. Um, and just the first and second, and then a vote on it.
Okay. So we motion, I motion.
Second.
I'll second.
What are we giving as the reason?
But we don't know what it is, I mean, I think you can give a broad reason for the purposes-
I know Commissioner Hernandez, did, did you have a specific reason, uh, again, we don't have to discuss the, the specifics, just a personnel or, or, um, uh, attorney-client privilege matter that, that we're entering into the closed session.
Uh, it's personnel.
Personnel matter.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, John, I, I didn't get it.
Uh, Chair, did you get the login?
I'm looking at it now, yeah.
Okay, you're going, I'm gonna send it again?
I'm sorry.
That's alright.
John, it's just being sent as a text, or?
Yeah.
Cause I'm on the phone now.
Uh, I can send it to both of you as a text.
Okay.
Okay, let's try it.
Include me in that, John, include me in that.
Include you in the text, alright.
Oh, I got it now.
Uh, you did get it, alright, Rock, did you get it?
I'm looking now. It's John Clark Cloud. Uh, I got the one at five fifty-six so far, it's a, there another one?
Hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna text it to you. And then Wallace, you said you wanna text as well?
Yes.
Alright, I sent them both to you, Yurgo, you wanna text too?
Yeah, please. Sorry.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave a joint.
Okay, alright.
I'm gonna leave now to, to start the closed session.
Alright.
Okay. John, you wanna take the vote?
Uh, Commissioner Walde to go into closed session?
Yes.
Mister Giorgiani's left already, Commissioner Donglap. Has left already, and Commissioner Medina Hernandez?
Yes, I did not receive it, though.
Oh, I didn't text it to you, you wanna text?
Yeah, you didn't send, you can e- email it to me.
I, I sent it by email already, I'll text you, uh, you're sending it here. I, I sent it by email already, I'll text you, uh you're sitting here. You got the email?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, alright. Chair, you're hopping over to the other one?
I'm hopping over right now.